Okay, it's seven oh nine PM, June twenty second, twenty twenty two. Call the planning board meeting to order. First is the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Okay, for the record, before we get started, one of our planning board members is on Zoom, Tony Springer. I just need you to repeat your exact location for the record.
Eighty-seven North by Ravina, New York.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll do roll call. John Keremski.
Here.
Kyle McMahon.
Here.
Josh Fisher.
Here.
Barb Conway.
Here.
Dane Morton.
Here.
Jason Tyler.
Here.
And Tony.
Yeah.
Okay, and our agenda tonight is presentation by Ed Flanagan. If you could please come to the podium with the tabloids.
Well, I guess you all read my letter. What I want you guys to consider.
Speak closer to the mic.
How's that?
Good.
Uh, I want to take this garage and utilize it as a garage. Many years ago, I guess the town actually created a hardship by raising the road up and making access to this garage impossible. So I'd like to combine, basically, it's a, it's on seventy-seven Hidden Valley Road property. And in order, if I take and move the doors to the back of the garage, I'll have to drive on seventy-seven to get into it. And it just makes sense to me to combine that little piece of property with seventy-seven. And it's basically being used for that now as a shed for what I do at seventy-seven Hidden Valley Road. So that's basically what I'm here for, to see if you guys can take a look at that and see what you think, whether it's something I can do. I'd like to repair it. It's kind of fallen down. The other thing that really is a problem for me and my wife is the safety aspect of it. Those doors are so close to the road. It's like two feet from the road. And, you know, people don't think Hidden Valley Road is a busy road, but it is busy during the summer, especially when the ranch is in session and all the cabins are being rented. And most people don't want to go, you know, they always come down that way so they can get around to hidden a couple of the cabins there. And I've almost been hit several times just coming out of there because you come out and you're on the road. You know, and I'm trying to bring lumber in or out or something, or I can't get a snow blower in there. I can't get my car in there. So I figured this was an easy way of solving that problem. So that's what I propose. That's what I'd like to do.
So that garage is basically, it's on, it's on, it's part of eighty-two, but it's on seventy-seven property.
Correct, correct.
And there's no way to, I mean, it's right on the edge of the property, I guess.
Yeah, it's actually, oh, it's on the edge. It's actually on the edge of the road.
Yeah, I see the road part, but I mean, like behind it and to the sides. Are there, is there any footage?
Yeah, there's, I got it in here. The lot is twenty-six by twenty-two and a half.
Okay.
And there's a fence around, chain link fence around it now. And it's all overgrown and I need to, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna put money in repair it, I want to build, use it as a garage, you know, not just as a shed. Because, you know, what things cost today? I just wanted to actually get a car in there or, you know, my lawnmower, you know, riding lawnmower or whatever.
Right. So, Karen, I got a question for you. Since it's two separate properties, I mean, he owns them both, but what if he sells? I mean, I'm down the road, just looking out for, if he sells it, sells one property, and then it becomes kind of like, well, in order to get to that garage, you go inside, you got, well, what he wants to do is like combine it.
Correct. Yeah, so in other words, if I do sell it down the road, I have no plan to do that.
Right.
That'll make a nice package, you know, there, there won't be any arguments or someone, you know, arguing about the fact that you're going on my property and all that stuff. And it just makes it, makes common sense to me. I mean, it's common sense to have it combined. So it's all, you know, all together on that side of the road.
That is, but as of right now, that would make it,
If, if it, if you leave it,
Not compliant, yeah.
If you leave it as it exists, the one parcel is on, is split by the road.
Right.
That little tiny rectangular spot goes with the parcel across the road. So, um, and in, in our ordinance, where, as I pointed out in my email to you, in the ordinance, it says that any parcel that's split by a road is considered a separate parcel, even though it has its own tax map number. So I didn't know whether to look at this as combining two lots, even though it doesn't have its own tax map number, in which case he doesn't really need to be in front of us for that. Or if it's a boundary line adjustment. And I ended up, after I had told Mr. Flanagan to come in and make this presentation, I ended up talking to the real property people at the county. I also had called the law firm that Mike Crowe is in. I didn't speak to you. You weren't available that day, so I spoke with John Aspwin. And he said to have him bring it to the board to make the decision as to whether you're gonna consider it a boundary line adjustment or a parcel combination. But the issue is boundary line adjustment, both lots are non-conforming sizes for the zone that it's in. It's, it needs to be an acre. They're not an acre. So your take, in subdivision regulations, it says you can't make a non-conforming lot more non-conforming. And by doing a boundary line adjustment, you would be doing that. But there's also an area in that book that talks about variances. And if they have a hardship and it's up to the board to decide if it makes sense to move forward with it regardless of that regulation. So Mr. Aspwin said to have him come in, make the presentation so you can decide whether it's the boundary line adjustment or the parcel combination, and if you will allow the boundary line adjustment before you move forward with it. Because if it ends up being a boundary line adjustment, he will have to have it surveyed. And I confirmed that with the county. That was my call to the county, because you had this map and I actually scanned that into my computer and sent it to the real property office. And they said that you really need to update it and that he wanted you to know, and I have this written down, that, that Coulter and McCormick that did your math that you presented to me, it was bought out by Van Duzen and Steve's, and they should have a record of that survey in, in their office. And they, it's, it'll be, it should be an easy matter for them to update it and, and redo that survey for you if they end up approving you to move forward with it.
Okay. Are there houses on both lots?
There is, there is an apartment building on the side of the road that contains a little rectangle. But it's on the larger parcel. It's a four apartment, four unit apartment building. And on the other side is his single family home on the other side of the road.
You really can't combine it because then there's too many, there's two houses on one.
No, he's not combining the two houses.
I was thinking if there was only one house, you could just incorporate both, make it one big parcel.
Big parcel, right.
But you can't do that.
Do that either, no.
No, the one is under an LLC and the other one is under our, our own personal names.
Okay.
And the other, the other thing that happens to us too is I replaced the windows in that door probably six or seven times because of the snowplow comes by. And it actually smashes all the windows and you can't, you can't get in and out of it. I mean, shoveling, forget it. I mean, it's just useless in the winter. If I could go around from the backside, then it's easy to, you know, snow blow it and get in and out. It's all level back there. It's easy, easy access and much safer.
I guess what's preventing him from coming in the backside now? I mean, is there anything?
Well, it's a different piece of property.
I mean, he can use it certainly. He could certainly still use it that way and renovate it.
Yeah, but I'm not gonna put the money into it unless I can transfer it because I will maybe down the road. I don't know. I may have to sell it or I will sell it. And I don't want to be driving on somebody else's property to access that. So I mean, it's basically useless to eighty-two Hidden Valley Road. And crossing the road is, it's not a great idea. Especially when, you know, we're out there with, summer. I mean, the winter, of course, you know, and the fall, spring is not bad, but it starts right now, you know, as far as a lot of traffic, trucks, buses, back and forth. That's a pretty busy little road in the summer.
I have a question. Are you considering renovating it for the apartments to use or just for your personal use at this time?
It would go along with the apartments. All the equipment, you know, riding lawnmowers and all that stuff would be in there. It would be part of the service.
Okay, so you're gonna renovate and update it to go along with the apartment.
Yes, yes, I want to.
Okay.
I want to do that, definitely.
So I just want to be clear that the apartment building is, looking at this map here, is it on, it's on the pink parcel or is it on the larger?
Bigger parcels.
The apartment's on the, okay.
The pink is the one that goes to eighty-two.
The apartment building is, is
On the other map?
On this one. And the house is on this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
The house is, the house is here and this is the apartment.
So by, let's say we take the garage and make it part of the yellow parcel. Eighty-eight or eighty-two, anyways, that would make it, I mean, that would be good because of the fact it's making it bigger. It's not less conforming. But then we're looking at the other one, which is, I guess, number seventy-seven. That's the one that's gonna be less conforming, correct?
It's kind of like a wash, isn't it? You're just taking a little part from one.
I mean, the other part probably isn't a problem because you're making it larger. It's the one we're making smaller that
Correct.
Needs a better.
But it's already considered a separate parcel anyway.
Right. We decided to put the road right.
In my opinion, if he's gonna fix something that's an eyesore and it's gonna benefit our community and maybe benefit the apartments for the community, can we join those two? That would be my opinion on it.
Yeah, that's, that's what he wants to do.
Yeah. Yep. I mean, anything that's an eyesore that somebody's willing to fix up to improve our community.
If you, if we did that, would you like tear down the whole garage and move it farther away from the?
No, I'm gonna leave it right there. I'm just gonna put a new roof on it. I'm gonna paint it, take the carriage doors off the front and put them in the back. Because it's leaning a little right now. A lot of people have taken pictures of it. They think it's pretty cool, but.
So what would be the most effective way to just incorporate this little parcel into that? It's seventy-seven.
Boundary line adjustment, right, Karen?
Yeah, that's, that's what the county advised me after I spoke to them, that that's how they're going to look at it as a boundary line adjustment. So, but it, the matter was, if that's the case, are you going to allow it because of?
Now, is that a zoning thing or?
It's both. You've got, it's more subdivision regulation than, if, if that's what you decide, then zoning regulations. You're, you're granting a change to the subdivision regulations.
Because of a hardship.
Because.
Which was created by the town.
Page.
Yeah, exactly. Long before you all were here.
Right.
Before I was there, but.
Before there were regulations, I think.
Yeah.
No, it makes sense to me, you know.
No.
That's pretty, he didn't come a long time ago.
Well, you know, I, I, an eighty-two, we blew off the roof, put up on a second story, added two more bedrooms and, you know, over the years, I've been there since two thousand and three. And we moved up here permanently in two thousand and fourteen, sold our house in Glenville and moved up here. So we've been here almost twenty years and, you know, the thing is you can only do so much, you know? But now it's time to fix that side up a little bit, make it more presentable. Our eighty-two, I think, looks pretty nice. If you've ever been by there.
Good.
Yeah, it looks really good.
This is what it says in the subdivision regulations under variances. Eight point ten hardship, eight point eleven, where the planning board finds that compliance with these regulations would cause unusual hardship or extraordinary difficulties because of exception, exceptional and unique conditions of topography, access, location, shape, size, drainage, or other physical features of the site. The minimum requirements of the regulations may be modified to mitigate the hardship, provided that the public interest is protected and the development is in the keep, is in keeping with the general spirit and intent of the regulations, eight point twelve. No such modification may be granted if it would have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of the official map, the zoning ordinance, the master plan, or these regulations. So I think, I, I don't have an opinion. I'm not supposed to have.
I think it's, I think it is a hardship that was created by the town, basically.
No accessibility.
I agree.
Do we have to?
I was gonna say, it's not changing really too much anything.
It's just the lots being conforming and non-conforming, but it's not his fault that this happened. As far as why we have to change it to make it accessible.
Do we have to make a motion to approve the boundary line adjustment?
No, you can't do that. He's gonna have to come back with a survey and the form for that, for the subdivision form that we have. But I, he didn't want to, and I didn't want him to go to the expense of having it surveyed, not knowing if you were going to let him move forward with it because it's an expense that he doesn't, you know.
So there's nothing we have to do as far as the?
No, it was just, are we going to let him do it or not?
Okay.
Have you looked into the shed enough where it's, you know, you can kind of salvage the shed?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's got the old, it's got the old novelty siding on it, which is kind of cool. I actually, it's on our camp, our house too, across the street in eighty-two. And so, yeah, it's gotta be painted and a new roof put on it. Cranked over a little bit because it's leaning a little. Definitely worth saving.
Okay.
Before we make any motions or vote, as far as that, does anybody have any questions or? It sounds like we're all in agreement that this is definitely a hardship that should be.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Good for Mike.
Yes.
And I don't see any negative impact it would have to approve it based on that.
So Mike, how do we make this motion as far as?
You don't need a motion.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Okay.
This is just a presentation, so it kind of informative discussion, so the applicant knows what steps he should take, if any.
But by telling him it's okay, it's kind of like free approval, correct? Because it's the expense. And then he comes back and we say, oh, we changed our mind. Right. Okay, yeah, that's understandable. So going forward, I mean, all we can tell you is we all agree with you that you should, it's up to you if you want to go ahead and get it surveyed and come back to us for approval for the boundary line adjustment, but.
Yeah, I definitely want to do it. They just got done surveying all that because of Thomas Reed's property. Is that something that I still need to do it again? Because they did.
Did they do your property? Maybe whoever did his can do you a separate map.
Just get a copy.
Because they, they have to be a certain size for the county to accept and you have to present them with something. You'll also, we'll have, you've got to come back to the planning board. I have a form, a subdivision form, which we use as a boundary line adjustment. And you'll have to pick that up, get that filled out, and you'll, and you'll have to have a map drawn of these two parcels. Show, and it has to state on there that the purpose of this, of the map is to combine, is to do a boundary line adjustment of, of that parcel to incorporate that small piece into the, the other piece. So you can talk to whoever he had survey and see, or you can go back to this Van Duzen and Steve's, like, Ron Dixon.
Email me that.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to come in and pick up that form, so I'll give it to you then.
Okay.
Okay.
And get those forms and
Yep.
Do whatever I have to do.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Take care. Next, the discussion of the travel trailers and RVs were, I think it was back in two thousand and nineteen, Karen, or, yes. Yeah, pre-COVID. We had a discussion of this and kind of sent it to the town board and nothing happened. And now they want us to look at it again and get our opinion of what we think.
I don't know if you remember, some of you weren't on the board at the time, the discussion on this, but in the ordinance, it basically states that RVs and boats can be stored or kept on a piece of property in the side or rear yard. In order to have a side or rear yard, you have to have a building on the property. So any parcel that does not contain a building is not supposed to have an RV or a boat parked on it or stored on it. And then the discussion came up, what about living in them or staying in them? And there's no definition about living and staying or anything in our ordinance. So there was a lot of discussion because there was a possible litigation going on in town because someone had brought in an RV on a parcel that had no building. And the neighbors hired a lawyer and there was possible litigation going on. So anyway, all of this discussion was going on about what were we going to do because there's records from, from minutes back in, I hope I brought that with me. I may not have. Um, back in early two thousands, I think, at a board meeting where they voted to not, yeah, that's the one. Nope, that's twenty twenty. That's not it. Anyway, we talked about it here about what regulations to put in place. And you, as a board, came up with the idea of having people, anyone that wanted to place an RV on a parcel, go through a site plan review. So you could look at things like, what were they doing about their septic? What, you know, did, did, would a fence in front of it, you know, help disguise it from a neighbor or whatever you decided to put regulation, you know, they could, you could address a lot of things in a site plan review. And that's what you sent to the board as your recommendation. When it got to the board, members of the board didn't agree. They wanted all kinds of regulations on them. They wanted, some of them wanted only RVs that were less than ten years old, but the argument became, well, you may own a ten-year-old RV that looks like a palace and I may own an RV, ten-year-old RV that looks like a dump. So how could you regulate what to have, what not to have simply by the age? Some of them wanted them only allowed in town between the May, months of May and October. Then the argument became, well, what if you were a skier, a snowmobile, or a hunter? And you wanted to have it for use in the fall season, winter season, and not just the summer season? And so there, there was a lot of back and forth about what they wanted, what they didn't want. They couldn't agree. It got tabled. And it never got resolved. I think because it got put on a back burner due to other political issues that were going on in town. Yeah, they changed lawyers and the second lawyer that came in, he suggested that we do a moratorium on RVs for a period of time while we rewrote the zoning ordinance to some kind of an effect. They were talking about, you know, right, not allowing them in certain zones in the towns or putting an overlay on the map and having them only in portions of zones. And they, they, the board didn't want that either. They still were going back to wanting, how old were the dealers and how long did you want them there? And, and they couldn't agree. It got tabled. It never got done. So it's been out there unresolved since two thousand and twenty anyway, if not before. Meanwhile, I get people calling me a lot, wanting to buy a piece of property. Can I put an RV on it? And I was told by the first lawyer to have a, to make my standard answer that per the zoning ordinance, you're, if you don't have a building on your parcel, you cannot park or store an RV. So that eliminated anyone from putting them on parcels that have no building. However, they're all over town. And I mean, they are all over town. So we've got to do, the, it, the issue has come up again. And they'd like to resolve it somehow. So that's they, that's why they asked to bring it back in front of the planning board to see if you had any other suggestions other than your, that first suggestion that you had to have them all go through a site plan review.
I think if I remember correctly, the reason we came up with this was because it was a way to control most of the aspects of what the RV was gonna do.
Right.
Instead of trying to, you know, address this issue and address a different issue, you know, this is a way that the whole board can look at individual project, make a decision on, you know, our opinions or their opinions on what the plan was for that particular RV. You know, it just seemed like the best way to deal with the multitude of issues that could come up with, you know, a piece of property.
But also, if you put conditions on it in a site plan review about keeping it in good condition or clean or, you know, making sure that the sanitary waste is taken care of. If they don't do that, then you have a leg to go in and do something about it.
That's a question. What is the, when the planning board makes a recommendation to the town, what's the protocol for that? How does that work when one entity communicates their recommendation or their preference to another?
I believe it's still the town board's decision. We can make, we sent this as a recommendation. They didn't like it. So, you know, that's fine. And we can send another recommendation with other items in it, but it's solely up to them to make the decision because they're gonna have to, I guess, have a public hearing and pass the law. And that's what we'll have to follow. A recommendation is just that. It's not, nothing other than a recommendation.
Would they come back to the planning board and say, we like this, we don't like this? Can you sort of make some contours to it so that?
They would make the contours at that point.
Not us.
I see.
Karen?
Karen, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Tony. With this, I'm thinking of a couple of different things here. Like one, one is the idea that the structure on the property, someone has a home and they have an RV and they're, they're parking it next to their home for storage. The other scenario I'm thinking is someone buys a piece of property. There's absolutely nothing on it. They specifically bought it to put an RV on it and use it as like a little, their own little mini campground. Those, to me, are very, very, very different, sorry, very, very different usage types. And I think the latter, I don't know, just at first blush, I think we're trying to maybe eliminate things like that in our comprehensive, few of us here are on the comprehensive planning committee. And I think, I don't know, I mean, we haven't even gotten to that point yet, but I'm thinking long term, that's not so favorable to have some, a scenario like that where it's just, like you said, they're popping up all over on parcels and there are just these RVs or campers out there and it's their own little mini campground. And so I don't know if anybody else, what they feel about that, but maybe we can talk about that.
I have two more to add to that. What if somebody is living in a camper and building a house on the property? Or what if somebody is living in a camper next to a residence because they say live in Florida for the winter or for the, you know, winter and they come up here for a couple of months and put a camper in their family's yard?
Yeah, I think that's why we, we came to this decision a couple of years ago was for situations like that, Tony. I think the example was a house burnt down. This house burned down. They lived in the RV temporarily while they rebuilt the house. And, you know, we wanted to, you know, give those people the opportunity to do that. This house burned down. They lived in the RV temporarily while they rebuilt the house and, you know, we wanted to, you know, give those people the opportunity to do that. Town thought it was.
Exactly.
So I think.
Karen. Karen, do you know what the other, like towns in our area, do they have any restrictions or regulations on campers on property?
I know that Warrensburg does not. I haven't asked any others that I recall now. They, they don't, they don't address it.
So it's unrestricted.
Did we also talk about a permit? Of some sort. I remember something about a permit.
It was done, yeah, that's, it was done as a special use permit. Each one would be looked at as a special use permit. Now, we, we talked about. Them being put on vacant parcels. That was the one major concern. But the other part of that that isn't talked about much are, as Tony brought up. People that may have family that come up from down south and park an RV in their driveway for, you know, while they visit or for a period of time. Do you want to regulate those too? But I mean, I'm looking out the window at the man's place across the street. Who has an RV parked in his yard. It certainly isn't set up to be lived in at the moment, but. He's got a house there. So his is probably legal as opposed to someone who has nothing on their parcel. And, but there's nothing in the ordinance that talks about living and staying in them. It's all parking and being stored on a property. It doesn't talk about living in it or staying in it. I don't, I don't necessarily want to say living, but the, the use of an RV as a living dwelling, as a dwelling. Is not talked about in our ordinance at all.
And another thing, I happened to go to the town board meeting when they were discussing this a couple of years ago. And they were talking about the people that already have RVs like parked. Under the river, under the lake, you grandfathered them in and it was just becoming a big question and a big mess. So I think that's why they put it on hold because what do you do with those people? And how, how do you know they've been there long enough and their trailers might be old, you know, thirty years old? You're gonna tell them, get off now? And it just created a big mess and they tabled the issue and now it's back to us again. But ultimately they're going to have to decide. We could give recommendations like we did, but it's gonna be up to the town board.
I think it makes sense to either go with a special use permit or some kind of site plan review based on the case by case basis. Because, you know, until we actually know, based on the individual, based on that particular landowner. That gives us the opportunity to kind of understand the existing circumstances on that parcel, more on that land for us to make a determination if they have proper. Protection for septic, if they're taking care of the property, the condition of the camper. You know, if we can kind of hit specific criteria on that scale, then we can have a better. Decision based on that case.
I, I think that's why we did that because we're not gonna be able to go after the people that already have them.
Right.
Anybody else that comes in, board, permit, whatever, I mean, whatever we gotta do.
But the issue does become, we don't know. All of the parcels that contain them now.
That's was the problem, right? Exactly. That was why they said table, you know.
Are there any zones in town that would be more favorable to have RV set up for people to like say, buy a plot of land and then? Or, or any zones that you just?
That would be, that would be a decision that you, that you would be making or the. That committee that's looking at the comprehensive plan right now, but they are all over right now. I mean, there's one parked down on Bay Road right now. There's one on East River. There's, there's probably fifteen along East River Drive. There's a parcel down on Coles Drive that has like five of them. Every summer they bring them in and they have for years. There's one over on Northwoods Road that was set up and they came and got. And that's the one that was discussed in the minutes years ago as to whether it was to be allowed or not. And they made them, they wanted to put in a septic system. They allowed them to put in a septic system. At that time, they said, at the end of the minutes, it basically says that the lawyer, the town lawyer. And the zoning officer said there was no reason to make any changes that they were fine the way they were, basically, in that meeting. And, but they're all over. They're in all zones in town there. So they're in Hamlet Residential, they're in Residential Town, they're in Residential Resorts, they're, yeah.
But I guess, I guess my question is to ask other members of the board what they would like to see in terms of, because I, I agree with everybody. I think this special use permit is definitely a way to go, but would we consider making it more? You know, not necessarily to appease the town board, but to give them a little something different and, and say. You know, in, in this zone, it would be okay, you know, like it, some of the rural zones, I, I think it would make more sense as opposed to, you know, in downtown. Just park an RV on a small plot of land, you know, or lot size, things like that, that we can discuss to maybe make it. A little bit more restrictive on that end to sort of eliminate some of the applications that would come in in the future.
Your recommendation doesn't have to change. Just because it wasn't.
No, yeah, I understand. Yeah.
Point that you're all making that this really isn't a cookie cutter scenario where you can just say, here's the ordinance. In every situation. Side yard setback or something. The nature of this situation really does.
I can't hear.
Scenario. The use that's gonna be put to. All those things.
I can't hear him, Karen.
All those things can be taken into consideration. When you have site plan review and you have a special use permit. And so, like I said. You don't have to try and come up with new recommendations that you think will appease the town board. Especially, you know, you, you think you have more or less a consensus of. These are the tools that we have available to us. To make the best decisions. Based on each application as it comes in. And so I, I think, you know, if, if what you had proposed previously is still your best recommendation. Or with a few minor tweaks or something is your, your best recommendation. I think that's fair to send back to the town board, potentially with maybe more of an explanation and rationale. By myself and Karen as to how you got there. That, that's, I think that's a fair recommendation.
The other benefit of the special use permit aspect was, site plan review does not always require, it's up to your discretion. A public hearing on a site plan review. Special use permits always require a public hearing. So if anyone had any specific objections or any objections at all. They would then have the opportunity to come in, air them, and you could put, if you chose to, conditions on. An approval if you approved an application that was in front of you. But a special use permit always has a public hearing where a site plan review. To your discretion. You, it's like plan review or not.
So I think it's interesting about this. I think Karen used the, the regs that you just read, just spoke specifically to storage.
Storage and parking.
And parking. Now, it's really evolved from that. With people, you know, living in them for, and if I remember when this came up. It was at East River Road and people were living next, you know, and so I think it's mushroomed. Into something or morphed into something that was never the spirit of the regs to have that happen. Maybe we take a look at, at that. I don't know. I'm, I'm just kind of venturing out into. Cause I'm starting with that, that vantage point where that's already written. And maybe that was really the intent all along, just to have people be able to store something next to their home or park it. And, and that's it. And now it's something very different. So what do we allow? We'll have to maybe create something to work around.
I don't want to speak for John, the chairman, but you don't have to finish this tonight. You can give yourselves time to think about it and come back and, and revisit it even at next month's meeting if you choose to.
No, I got a question about the special use. Do we have the right to just say you can't do it, period?
Do they have the right to say that in a special use permit? They can deny a special use permit, correct?
Sure.
I also have a question. So. How long is a special use permit? Is it forever or is this something that we can issue year by year? For them to submit an application year by year to put a camper on their piece of property? And maybe associate a fee with it? Because if they put a house on a piece of property, we're obviously getting taxes from the property. But if they put a camper on it, it's increasing the property value that they can use it. But we're not seeing anything as a town from that property value because they're putting a camper on it.
Well, the first part of your answer is a special use, and this is on page ninety-two of the zoning ordinance. A special permit, a special use permit may be issued as permanent. Except where permitted use is discontinued for any reason for a period of two years or more. Can be issued as temporary to seize on a specific date and not be renewable. Or C, renewable within a specified period of time set by the planning board. And it also says a special use permit may be revoked by the planning board. If the conditions are not, if the, if the conditions of the permit are violated and. If they violate the conditions, they're subject to an enforcement action. And then the last one is this, all special use permits shall run with the land and shall be transferred to successive property owners. Provided the permit has not expired or is not revoked for failure to meet the permit conditions. So you could, you could make it permanent. You could make it renewable after a specified time, period of time. So you, it's up, it would be at your discretion as to how you did it.
The reason I'm saying this is because trailer parks are inspected every year. And you have to submit for your trailer park license within the town and pay the fee. So if we try to follow along those guidelines where they're, where they have to submit every year. And pay their fee, that would give us control over a yearly versus giving them a lifetime use of a camper on a piece of property.
The, the only problem with that is, do they come in front of the planning board and we're gonna have a hundred people?
Or, or it's just an application and they need to fill out the application? And maybe we have stipulations that if there's certain requirements that are not met, then they have to come in front of the planning board. But if they meet all the requirements on paper, then the permit is just issued. I mean, I guess we have to talk about it and figure out how we would want to do that.
Right, that's, that's something we could recommend to the town board too, correct?
I think the issue we kept running into, based on last discussion is the complexity of each individual application is pretty incredible.
Right. I just hate to see everybody come back. Everybody come back here once a year. It would be a nightmare.
Right.
Well, with the trailer parks, you submit the, you fill out the application or the form every year and then just submit it with your payments. So if it's the same as the previous year and you're just renewing, maybe we do it that way with a renewal. Unless there's a change, you don't have to come with it in front of the planning board, but anything new would have to come in front of us.
You know, it's not a trailer park, Tony. I don't think we want to go down that.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying with the trailer park though, there's a form that has to be filled out every year. Maybe we could go along those lines where we have a special use permit to put a camper on a piece of vacant property. With a renewal every year.
I think the year is good too, because it gives us the opportunity to, you know, maybe that property owner might be looking at in the future, putting. A structure on that property so we can kind of evaluate it as that case by case basis to give us that. Kind of guiding factor of, you know, where that property is going. Obviously, if somebody's just coming to us year after year saying they're just gonna leave camper on there and we have to review it. Then, you know, have a understanding of where that's going.
And it also give us control that if we approve a permit one year and come to find out it's a huge parking issue or a huge hazard. We can say no the following year because of issues that were on the property with the camper.
Okay, I got a question. Your scenario, instead of coming in front of the planning board unless they need to, who is going to oversee this? To make sure, is it gonna be Karen, the CEO or? I'm not sure where the trailer parks go to as far as getting their.
I have to inspect them every year.
Oh, you do?
Yep.
So it would be more work for your part timer soon to be full time?
Yeah.
I mean, I just, I could see that happening rather than coming from the planning.
That's what all these regulations do is they'll end up creating more work somewhere down the road, but that's. That's all part of it. I mean, the town recognizes that I'm not able to do all that I should have been doing. So they're bringing someone in and now if we add more regulations between this, we're talking about the short term rentals. That's probably all gonna fall to my office, but, you know, if you're gonna have a second person in there, we'll just do it. They, the board knows how much work is coming in and out of my office. So if they, if more regulations create more work, then that would just have to be addressed down the road somewhere. That's the nature of the beast.
Which is the short term rentals too, which we'll talk about later.
So if we went with the special use permit as opposed to the site plan review, we would have to have a public hearing every time somebody came in. Then we would give us the option to revoke it at a later date if we wanted to put that as a.
As a condition.
As a condition.
We can also have a condition where if they're in the process of building a house on the property. That we don't, we waive the fee for the camper special use permit because they already have a building permit on the piece of property. There's, you know, we can. Go as far as we want to go with it or do as minimum as we want with that.
What were you saying, Josh, is that we would do it the first time, the new, but then the next year unless. The planning or CEO said, oh, listen, we gotta overlook, we gotta look this over again. Then they come back, otherwise, so we're not looking at a hundred every year or more.
Right. And then if, so if you put a stipulation of a year on it. When that special use permit is up in a year, do we have to have another public hearing for that application?
No.
Okay.
It would, it would be like a permit that, that would be renewed.
And maybe if like the criteria is the same and has remained unchanged, then that's an easy renewal compared to if the criteria changed. Within that year and then comes before us. So we have a second look at it if something changed.
The people that live around them are starting to complain and they're, to her, which they'd have to come in front of us.
Yeah. As, you know, to Karen's point, you know, if it's, if this is blossoming into kind of an issue around the town. Then we're gonna have not only, let's say, five campgrounds, but we're gonna have fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty mini campgrounds. Kind of depleting from the campgrounds that we already have in, in the town.
I also think. One of the, one of the criteria I think is very important is they need to be registered and insured in order for us to approve it also.
So that could be part of the application.
Yes.
Um, are these little camper pulled behind campers, you know, the ones that pop up? Are they registered as well? I just don't know because I don't know.
Yeah. Yes, you have to get a plate for them.
Well, what if, what if you have it registered and on the road, then you pull it into your property and you no longer are taking it on the road? And you don't need to register it, then what?
Well, we could put a stipulation on it that it has to be registered and insured because if we deny the permit, they have to move it.
Yeah, but coming back to you every year to renew the permit, you'll have, have to show proof of registration and insurance.
And insurance.
And maybe the, the size of the camper, depending on the size, you know, if we're only talking to pop up. Compared to, you know, a thirty foot trailer, if it's a. Compared to, you know, a thirty foot trailer, if it's a thirty foot trailer, maybe we say, you know, if you're gonna house a thirty foot trailer, maybe look at a. Septic system of some kind if it's gonna be used year round.
I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying. Plan about our town and I don't, you know, I, I'm not sure that's the direction we wanna take the town in. You know, is to start allowing all of that stuff happening. We'd rather, I think we'd rather prefer. Permanent homes and residences.
I agree too, but some people would like seasonal, you know, if they're trapped, maybe buy a piece of property. Live in Florida and live here and they own the piece of property and they wanna be able to park their. Travel trailer for two months here in the summer. We should allow them to be able to do that too. We don't wanna push people away from being in town and enjoying their property.
I think that was another thing that was discussed too, back then was. You know. If, if they had to get, pull them out in the winter, I think was the discussion.
Yeah, that's, that's where the, have them only be there for a certain period of time, but the other argument was. But your period of time, May through October is not my period of time, October through May that I want mine there. You know, how can? But if you, if you did it as a special use permit, they would be presenting to you. What they wanted to use it for and what period of time they would have it for and you would have all of that knowledge.
And if they were gonna leave it there or not, or what?
So after the special use permit, let's say just a theory is approved based on that property. And we approve it based on certain criteria. What's the enforcement piece from that point? Who does that fall on?
Part time, soon to be full time.
It would be written into the ordinance as to the, who's enforcing it and what it is, but it will probably fall to the zoning office.
I think, which we, we won't have to deal with hopefully, but the hardest part is the people that already have permanent places. And they're not good, you know, I guess they're gonna have to grandfather them in and the town itself's gonna have to decide.
One of the basic things that you. Need to discuss, are, are you talking just vacant parcels where people wanna bring them in or are you talking parcels that do contain? Buildings. It's the, the ordinance says, it's in the definition of side and rear yard, it says building. It doesn't say principal building, which would mean a house. It just says building. Because one of the arguments that I've gotten very recently is that there's a very small storage shed on a vacant parcel. Can they consider that the building and park the RV there because that storage building? Exists on that parcel and now if you have a vacant parcel and you want to build an accessory building, a storage building. If you don't have a principal, a building there. You can't, a principal building, something that it's accessory to, you can't put it on the parcel unless you're building that building. Here we go again with that, within, and the CEO for that principal building is issued within a year. From the date of the issuance of the permit of the accessory structure. So, but if that, if you've got a parcel that already has from an old zoning ordinance and it was okay. Or even if it was back before we regulated these small ancillary buildings. If that building is okay to be there because it's grandfathered in, okay, a building exists there, can they bring in a camper? And set it up on their property?
Which is what happened on Bay Road.
But that's a vacant parcel now.
But there was a house there, they tore it down. Well, they're doing stuff on there the last few days. I don't know what they're doing, but clearing the land.
The other issue is, is that. We're also taught when we, when we're discussing this, we're talking about residential, but. You know, you've got other zones in town. You've got Hamlet Commercial, Hamlet Industrial and. RVs and campers are not listed in that use table, so I tell people. That they are not allowed on Hamlet Residential, Hamlet Commercial properties because they're not listed in the use table. An RV or a camper or anything. The only way you can have them on a residential property, all the other zones, is if you have a building there to park them in this. Park and store them in the side and rear yards. That's where the whole issue has rolled into. It's not having a building on a parcel and parking them in the side and rear yard.
Well, easy to, be distinct of that.
Well, that's what I've been doing, but there's all these other ones in town already that. People, you know, because a lot of people have them on their property right now. They take them out in the fall, they go back to Florida, they go back to wherever, they're gone, but they bring them back in again, so you're bringing up. Pete, something back into a vacant parcel, you know, and. I have not enforced it because it's so erratic all over town that I'm not gonna pick and choose who I'm going to enforce and who I'm not. I want it to be, I want it to be a regulation that is in my book that I can follow and, and follow. I don't wanna be making it up every time I go along.
Storage is one thing. If they're parking their camper, storing it, but if somebody is actually staying in the camper. Then I feel they should have to fill out a special use permit and get. From us to have it on any piece of property if they're living in it for any period of time. Whether they have a house on the property or not, if somebody is living in an outbuilding, which could be a travel trailer. That should not, that should have to come in front of us, vacant lot or a house already on the property.
Not sure about the house on the property that's already stated in the.
Yeah, but if, if somebody's parking a camper next to their house and somebody's living in the camper for two or three months. That should have to come in front of us. Because then that's a structure on their property that's not being moved for like three months or however long they're living in that piece of property. That should have to come before us, just like everything else comes before us when they wanna make a change to their property.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, you know, we can go with a recommendation of a special use permit or a site plan review. I don't know what everybody else is leaning towards.
I would say special use permit. Yeah, and then I, I think we should probably revise that. Structure to specify a, a home for the storage aspect of it. Not just say, you know, building.
Cause that just means somebody have a shed on their property and then they just plop a trailer there and. Exactly.
Cause I, I do.
Can you say that again, what you?
Well, I think it's like two separate issues, right? The storage and then the people actually living in it. So specify not just structure, but. I don't know how dwelling, you know, single family home, whatever you're gonna.
Like you said, Karen, if there's a difference between just a building or structure and a primary, meaning a home. And maybe amend whatever that, that regulation is. To say a, a primary, a primary structure. Or living residence or however you word it.
Yeah, yeah. And then getting back to Tony's point, if somebody is going to live in that and there's still, sorry, there's still. A primary structure, if they're still gonna live in that for any period of time, I guess specify how much time. We would have to special pot, how much time? Then they go to the special use, you know, whether it's over seven days or, you know. Cause you don't want somebody who's coming up for a week to visit family to have to come in for a special use permit.
Right, exactly. But if they're gonna stay for two or three months in the summer on somebody's property. The same amount of time other campers are asking to be there, then that's not fair.
I think that covers everything right there, cause like you said, every, every issue is gonna be a complex issue with these, they're all different.
But if we use what we already have on the books and just modify that to be a little more specific. That's our end game, you know? And it's not gonna put a lot of burden on Karen either, is it? There it is.
I don't know how many we'll get when we start, but that might be a busy summer. Cause they'll all have to come in front of the planning board. We might have public hearings for all of them or, or you spoke, I think we have to, right? For each one.
And the public's not going to really, well.
Well, what's the last pass? They're not gonna have a choice.
I can see someone in May wanting to bring it in though, and not wanting to wait two months until July. Because they'll come in front of the board in June, have the public hearing in July.
So be August where they bring her.
Yeah, it's, I can see where that might be an issue, but.
Or if you set up a, a special meeting every spring just for that purpose.
Well, the problem is people might decide to come up here and join and find out, oh my God, what do I do? Well, go through the process.
I would just have to take it on an individual basis and see how it goes.
Well, it's inconvenient, you know, but you gotta start somewhere. It's like, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be tough for the.
Now with the special use permit, can, there has to be a public hearing for any permit that comes through.
Why we went with site plan?
No, we did, you went with special use.
Cause if maybe there's a, you know.
And the reason was, was to have a public hearing so that anybody in the neighborhood that objected would have a chance to have their say.
Well, I mean, the recommendation two years ago, site plan review, right?
No, it was special use permit. In my notes that I had.
Cause maybe there's a specific question that, you know, kind of the, the checkbox on the sheet of, you know, is there any public concerns? Is there any complaints pertaining to the property? Maybe that's a question on the permit. That if there is no public hearing and there's no public issue of any kind that skips. Or maybe kinda supersedes that public.
Under a public hearing on special use permit, the planning board will schedule a public hearing. Say it's at your discretion where site plan review, you do have the discretion whether you have one or not.
Cause maybe to cut down on the number of applications or the, I guess, the, the workflow through. Maybe that question, whether there's a public issue. Cuts down on those permits pertaining to like coming before us on a, on a very frequent basis. If there, if there's no public issue, the permits are, you know, approved based on if it meets the criteria along with public.
Hearing on the night, the initial night of the application.
We can.
Without, I thought you had to give notice, like.
Yeah, you'd still have to give notice. It would require getting, you know, the application in within.
Oh, I, in other words, they had better to let us know at least a week or so ahead of time they're gonna do this, so we could plan the same night.
Public notice has to be in the paper five days before and it has to go to any property within five hundred feet. Ten days before the hearing. So they would have to get it in a good. Two to three weeks, actually.
That's, that's not uncommon for most, um, uh, planning boards, ZBAs. The application cutoff is essentially. The, you know, the last meeting's almost thirty days in advance. So that's. If it comes to that. Way to kinda keep things moving so you don't have. Things stacking up.
So theoretically that way, somebody could come up in May and get their camper approved in by June. You're saying, so.
They gave him, let's say, May first and we have our meeting the fourth, Thursday or Wednesday. And they want a public hearing, or we have to have a public hearing, we put everything together so that there would be a public hearing the same night.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go.
Those minutes do say site plan review, but the actual proposed local law says special use permit.
I, I thought it was special use.
So what, um, we're gonna go with?
With what's there, except we're gonna use, obviously not site plan review. And that we would like to see a yearly permit. In the application, they have to prove that their vehicle's registered and insured. And they'll have to come back to the. Zoning officer once a year. And if everything's, you know, compliant, but they don't have to come in front of the board again.
So renew their, their special use permit yearly.
Now, obviously, if you get any complaints, well, then it's probably automatically gonna kick to, to coming back in front of the board. Good question.
I think we should charge a fee because then it would encourage people to maybe build a permanent residence. Verse, put the camper there every year.
Is there any, anything similar?
Yeah, I was gonna say, does somebody else, another town have a fee for that or?
So I know the town of Queensberry has, you know, and then this is mainly pertaining to. You know, retail or, or point of sale. But, um, you know, with businesses that are looking to transact within the town, they already have to have an established business within the town. So they, if they were to essentially do a parking lot event in a, a particular property, they would have to pay a five hundred dollar fee. For that special use permit to transact for that time period. I'm not saying five hundred dollars is the, the magic number.
Well, there's a fee for the special use permit application and public hearing of a hundred dollars anyway for anyone that comes. That's set by the board in our, um, fee schedule. So if you want it, a renewable permit each year, then they would have to. I think the board would probably set that fee, am I correct?
Town board, right?
The town board, or can we recommend? Okay, so you could recommend. A fee. I know for, um, for the trailer parks, it's so much per lot. Is it fifty, seventy-five dollars per lot? Tony, do you remember off the top of your head?
Yes, I believe it's seventy-five.
Situation, I would.
A year round too for that, right? I mean, these might just be, maybe.
What do you think would be a reasonable renewable fee if they have to pay a hundred dollars for the special use? Permit application to begin with and then next year they have to come back and renew their special use permit. What do you feel is a reasonable fee for a camper?
Three thousand dollars.
I, I don't know, twenty-five or fifty, cause I think seventy-five for the trailer, that's a permanent location. Somewhere around twenty-five to fifty dollars, in my opinion.
Right, but they're also, they're also, that's also getting assessed by property taxes. Too. So the camper's not.
Yeah, considering they're not paying property taxes.
Well, they're paying property taxes on the property, but not on.
Property, but not living and they're gonna be living on it. They're, they're asking for permission to live on the property.
Not year round. At least fifty then. Recommend.
What, what would you recommend then?
Scale for short term versus long term? You know, if you're, if you're gonna be there for longer than a year, the fee is a little bit higher versus somebody who's only doing a short term.
I think if somebody applies and the, the permit lasts a year, they could technically be there the entire year.
Whatever they want.
At that point, so we should just have it match the trailer.
Double check that Karen, just to make sure it's seventy-five.
I'm pretty sure it's seventy, seventy-five per lot.
So you could write that down, seventy-five is recommend.
So i- is that it then? You're gonna recommend a special use permit again so that you can look at all conditions? You have to have a public hearing and then, um, you want the applicant to prove that. The RV is registered and insured and, um. To renew the special permit yearly if it's approved. And, and they don't need to come back for site, for a special use process again. Unless there are complaints or violations, in which case. It's kind of my discretion. It's kind of my discretion.
Yes.
And then um.
You're the boss.
And then Dana and Barb wanted to change structure to primary residence in the existing code.
In that definition of side of your yard.
Right, the storage.
So this is part of the good news, we're kind of done with this. No, I'm just gonna talk to the board. We need to have a workshop for this short-term rental, the board, the town board wants us to have a workshop for. I was at their meeting last Monday, and they kind of wanna get this thing. Passed into law regulation by January first, but they kind of want our input, so all you have tonight is just the material.
Okay.
At the men, at the meeting, they're leaning towards, you'll see Warrensburg and Bolton Landing. Kind of. Mirroring their process. I guess Warrensburg was first, and Bolton Landing almost went with exactly the same thing through a lot of the definitions, except they added to it. Uh, which, you know, they're gonna end up doing, but they're gonna want our recommendation looking at this. Just, you know, at the meeting when they, we handed out these sheets. People are there, Warren County occupancy tax database, now if you can see this, but all these people are LLCs or Airbnb's. And that's just the beginning. Cause if you look at uh retail sale or sales of homes, whenever you see Lake Luzerne, it says LLC, that means they're gonna use it as Airbnb. They're already, some of them are already registered Warren County, these aren't yet, well, that passes down to the table looks. But they wanna kind of regulate it in our town, because we have no regulation. So that's why they wanna do something like Warrensburg and Bolton Landing. And I thought, well, they, they wanted us to have a workshop. And I said not till July, because we had enough. This for tonight.
This is already.
Top part is already, they're already, they're already registered Warren County, the bottom, bottom part is not yet, but that's already Lake Luzerne, what's going on now.
Can we get it covered?
Sure.
Wow.
Well, what I'll do is bring it to the next.
I can scan it into my computer and send it out. I've got it. Wow, this is a lot.
Yes.
This is only what's known.
What the county did was they hired a firm to research all of the Airbnb verbo sites, all of that, and they came up with. Countywide, a list of places that were short-term rentals, and this is Luzerne's share from that list, but they have. I, I'm, I don't, they have an ongoing process of keeping up with this. I think they do like a maintenance on it. So they will catch other ones as they, as they come in. But um, one of the things that I was, I reported on at this meeting that we had, we had a workshop with the town board. Is that for Lake George and Warrensburg, the Warren County Building Codes Office, they actually have them. Warrensburg and Lake George has Warren County Building Codes go in and do what they call a life safety inspection on any of these. Places that are trying to get permits for the um short-term rentals, and basically what they um looked at is. First of all, they search the records and make sure that there's no open permits or violations, people that have gotten permits and never gotten them closed out or CO, they make them. You know, finish out any open permits, and if there are any violations, they make them correct them before they'll issue them anything. And they um also request something from the town, um like a resolution or a letter signed by the supervisor. Requesting that Warren County do these inspections because they don't have a right to go on a property um otherwise. And then the property owner is, and you'll see this in the applications that I gave you. The property owner has to request the inspection from the county. And, but they won't get their permit if they don't have the inspection, so, but it allows the county to go in to get, again, because they don't have a right to go on a property. Unless they're invited onto a property. So they look at things such as smoke and CO detectors, make sure they're there and working. Handrails and guardrails, to make sure they're there, and that, you know, they're um safe. General signs of disrepair, like electrical hazards, signs of water leakage, they look to make sure that um the property contains no hazards like tripping and falling, like walkways and and things like that. Um, they provide an occupant load for the house, and based on the square footage and number of bedrooms, because. State code has a certain, has a certain size that's required for a bedroom, and how many people you can put in a bedroom. Based on the size, and um. It's a one-time inspection, they, they charge seventy-five dollars for that fee, and if the town has an expiration on their permit. Um, the applicant would again be responsible for reapplying to the county um for. Doing the inspection whenever they do. Now, I talked to Warrensburg and Lake George and Bolton, and it. I think Bolton's permit is, uh, I'm sorry, I think Lake George's permit is good for one year, Bolton and Warrensburg permits are good for three years. The permits do not transfer with the owner. If they sell the place and somebody else buys it. The new owner has to come in and get the whole new permit because they're looking for contacts and all of that kind of thing. Plus, we all know that when people buy houses, they go in and renovate, and they may change something that might be a life safety issue. So they, they make them redo it if a new owner comes in. Um, we, we talked about issues like overcrowding, is a septic adequate? Is there someone local to contact if there's problems? What are they doing about garbage? There is a noise ordinance, how do you let them know? And and they're addressed in a lot of these local laws, some of these issues are addressed in these local laws, so take the time to read them through. Um, what about pets? Um. I see here, no tent, canopy trailer, travel trailer, motorhome, camper, yurt, vessel, motor vehicle, or temporary structure shall qualify for. Use or occupancy as a short-term rental. We, we've got a break and switch our tape, so let's take a break for a minute.
But I thought that was interesting.
Where are you, where are you? Our current Airbnb tents or?
This is the town of Bolton, page eight.
Yeah, so the.
Uh, uh, letter M.
Back on there.
This is good. Yeah, give him a minute, it takes a minute to do this.
Yep, and page Bolton's and scholar. That's, we were looking at it, I mean. Landing followed Warrensburg, almost, you look at the first same one, right? These are exact same words.
They probably get it.
Yeah, it looks like.
I think both of them, I don't know.
Lake George is in there too.
Yeah.
Which.
Who was the first one to the, to the starting line on? Was it Warrensburg or Bolton?
It was Warrensburg. Warrensburg, two thousand nineteen, Bolton, two thousand twenty-one, and I'm not sure about Lake George. Just to give you an example of how big this Airbnb is.
Oh, sure.
Last year through June tenth, twenty-one, the revenue collected for Warren County was four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. As of June tenth this year, the revenue collector was seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. That's an increase of almost sixty percent, Airbnb rentals, revenue coming in, which we get a share of it, you know, depending on what we have, but. We do get occupancy tax, we get a share of it, so that's how much it's increasing, it's just going up.
Now, what, what they suggested, oh. Well, and then you think about this for a second. I've got my lot, I'm gonna put an RV on there, and that's my Airbnb right there, and I'm gonna rent that out each week. Right? I mean, is that far-fetched, you all said? Okay. Now, well, that's all part of the issue.
Yeah.
And one, what they suggested at the workshop meeting that we had was take these. Um, short-term rental. That we've provided to you from Warrensburg and Lake George and Bolton, read through them, highlight the things that you like, cross out the things that you don't like. If you've got other suggestions, write them down, and then we can have a workshop on them and come back and. See, you know, what recommendations you, you wanna make as well. One of the things that they talked about again was uh the town board talked about was maybe doing it as a special use permit, but the problem with that is special use permits run with the land, they don't run with the owners. So it would pass from, from owner to owner, and the, and that's, you don't want that because of the changes that might be made, so um. Anyway, that was some of the things that we talked about, you know, parking, trespassing, that was an issue. And, you know, what, people have pools that maybe don't have pool alarms and things, so there's different things to think about. But they wanted you, they wanted your input on it, so.
So what I'd like to do is like, for a workshop, maybe uh the week before our meeting next month, like July twentieth is a Wednesday, and Wednesday seems to work for everybody. And then the twenty-seventh is our regular meeting. Cause then they'll have their agenda meeting, I don't know what they'll discuss, but that's after the twenty, but before the twenty-seventh.
I know, I can't do the twenty. Maybe the Tuesday before. The nineteenth? So we want to come to the date right after that.
Yeah, so we can, yes, we can set a workshop in here. How about you, Josh?
The next couple of weeks are the holiday. I know, next week families come. Yeah, eight grandkids.
How many?
That's the only ones that are coming.
So I think you should have an RV park.
I have a, a building behind my house, it's legal, it's like a screen house, and that's, we, last year was raining.
At electricity.
So. Come up with a date?
Yeah, with date.
Does anybody else have a conflict, or is it just me?
But the.
I have a conflict on the twentieth.
Okay, you do?
Yeah, I can do the nineteenth.
Okay.
The eighteenth, nineteenth.
I can do the nineteen too.
You can do nineteen, how about? Dan?
Yeah, I'm kind of slaved up the road, so I'm not going anywhere.
Looks like the nineteenth's gonna be the day of Tuesday.
The nineteenth?
Yeah.
Now, will that interfere with your comprehensive plan meetings?
No, ours is the twelfth.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the nineteenth.
The nineteenth?
At seven PM?
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
Sorry.
So Tony, we're gonna make it on July nineteenth at seven PM.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
And she can pick her stuff up whenever, right? There's a lot of material.
Yeah, Tony, I have that, the packet of these um local laws on the short-term rentals for you. I didn't have them that day that you stopped in the office.
Okay, and we can, and when um I heard Barb say about the, the campers, we can just put a stipulation that you have to be the property owner staying in the camper. And then we can eliminate that.
So, were you talking about the RVs now?
Yeah, the RVs, how Barb was concerned that they were gonna be renting them out.
I think a lot of these.
Oh, like just have like a piece of property and put your RV on there and then.
So there has to be the.
You.
Do that.
It's gotta be the property owner that's registered and insured that's going to be staying in it.
What about if they have guests?
Well, that, that's fine, they just can't rent it out as a, you know, they can't rent that. RV out.
Like an Airbnb kind of thing.
Right, exactly, we can, we can nip that right in the bud, so that doesn't happen.
She's, she's, we're back to RV.
Yeah, yeah, but I think her concern was that they were gonna rent it as an Airbnb.
Right, yeah, that's what.
Right, and we can nip, we can nip that right in the bud, cause I heard Barb mention something about being concerned about that.
They can make it part of the short-term rental stuff that you can't use an RV or a camper as a short-term rental.
Yes.
I'll add that to my list for that.
I think a lot of say that already.
Okay.
This is also a great uh. This came from, what magazine was that, this regulation of short-term rentals, like downtown or something, remember Karen? It's a good article to read.
Yeah, I'll, I've got that.
That's part of our package, yes.
I'm going to lose service here in just a minute, so I'm gonna say goodbye.
Okay.
So you don't wonder where I went to. Are we good?
Yes, he has a nineteenth.
Bye, Tony.
Okay, thank you, no, bye.
Bye. I think uh.
Oh, I have something.
Oh, there's, there's no minutes, we don't have to worry about that.
This is just for. Kicks and giggles of. Karen, of the discussion proposed new ordinance regarding placement free items on a parcel and length of time. Remember, Josh and I came up.
They were doing, I don't think everything.
No, it's.
They haven't done anything still.
I can tell you that the beds are gone and so are the tires.
Yes.
That's all they care about.
A long time. Whatever happened with those? I think, and nobody bought them, I'm hoping they went to the dump. But I still have that on my computer, what we talked about, and again, it was one of those things that.
Please don't take it out.
We, they're gonna change the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance will be changed as a result of the comprehensive plan being changed. So I, that, it's in my list of things that we will need to address then, unfortunately, it didn't get done in any. Timely fashion to take care of the issue that was at hand at the time, but.
So the good news is, there's, well, there's no, managed to approve tonight. Uh, as far as all the new business, the only thing new is the next meeting we have will have your assistant here taking notes, so nobody will have to do it, he'll be doing it. Any other old new business before we adjourn?
I didn't do a very good job of it tonight, I'm gonna relay on that tape.
You're fired next month.
Karen, I don't know what we'd do without you. Yeah, it is what it is, I haven't even done the zone, the zoning board of appeals.
Make a motion, we adjourn?